Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Adelanto Annual Organization Board Meeting for Adelanto Elementary School. Today is Tuesday, December the 12th, 2023, and the time is 5:30. Section 1.02, call to order. 1.03, roll call and quorum establishment. Ms. LeVey, please.
Take roll.
Trustee Benz.
Present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, present. The quorum has been established. Section 1.04, please stand and place your right hand over your heart for the pledge of allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Love to hear those voices.
Thank you. I love to hear those voices. Moving on to section two, adoption of the agenda. Ms. LeVey, do we have any proposed additions, deletions, and adjustments in the order of business?
Madam President, we do. Item 14.38, certificated personnel appointment of May Salenda, middle school interim principal. The salary should be middle school principal salary, $150,142. Health welfare, $21,554.24. Total salary and benefits, $171,696 with 24 cents.
Which item was that, Zee?
Item 14.38.
Oh, 38, okay, thank you.
So the salary was written wrong, and so we had to make the correction.
Thank you. With those corrections, adoptions of the agenda, trustees, I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
Turner, a motion to adopt the agenda minus 1438. Corrections?
Soto, I second.
Well, with the corrections at 1438, I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
Ms. LeVey, please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Ben, Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass, 5-0. Moving on to section three, annual organization. 3.01, annual organization, election of officers and voting representatives for the annual meeting of school representatives. For president, trustees, I need a motion for president.
Trustee Turner, I motion. And this motion goes with a lot of thought and preparation. A motion that we continue to have Trustee LaFrench as our president for another year.
Soto, I agree. I second that motion.
We're now open for discussion.
Okay. I made that motion because for the past year, you know, feedback from the community about, you know, the way the DAIS looks and the way that we're conducting business. I feel I would like to continue with that momentum for another year. As board president, you can serve for two consecutive years, and I would like to see that happen before we change hands. And Trustee LaFrench, you're doing an excellent job, and I appreciate that. I've gotten a lot of feedback, you know, under your leadership, and I would like you to continue in that role for another year.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any discussion before I speak?
I think just coming into the new board, I've seen amazing growth, and I want to see continued growth. I think you've done an excellent job, President LaFrench, and I would like to see you for another year as our president.
Thank you. I do want to say that it's my second term as trustee here at Adelanto Elementary School District, and I appreciate the faith that the board has in me. I was a little nervous when I first started off. I will say that moving forward, I will do everything that needs to be done, and I will say that my board will have me. I'll be excited to do it for another year. With that being said, is there any other discussion? Ms. LeVey, will you take that vote, please?
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass, 5-0 for President LaSean LaFrench. Thank you. Moving on to section. Trustees for, I need a motion for a clerk.
Again, I would like to continue with the momentum, and I would like to nominate Trustee Webster, a clerk.
Soto, I'll second that motion.
We're now open for discussion.
I echo what I mentioned, what I said in the first with, you know, reelection of you as president. I feel that we're on the right track. And I think that, and I feel, I wholeheartedly feel that, you know, the change would, I don't think the change right now would be suitable for us, you know, and again, the feedback from our constituents out there that watch us on the DAIS, you know, when we meet, you know, they're happy. They say we're happy, and they love the job that we're doing here. So I would just like to continue with that momentum.
Any further discussion?
I would like to say that I appreciate trustees Webster's passion in what she does. She gives a lot to the board and to the district, a lot, lot of time and a lot of energy. And I trust her as a clerk. She questions things, and she doesn't shy away from the difficult things. And I think that, you know, though some may pick at her age, that's not, that's irrelevant. She's transparent, and she helps the kids, and she helps the district. And I, for one, am very, very, very glad you're here. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
I'd say I want to echo the sentiments of trustee Benz and trustee Turner. We're going in the right direction. We have an excellent clerk, and I look forward going with the board.
My turn. I want to say over this past year with the support of Ms. Webster, her and I work very close together. We have conversations. She enlightens me. She's there, has always been there for me. If I was not here during the time that a surgery took place, she was right there. She has been there with me during agenda settings, and we work well together. And I appreciate her input. I appreciate her laughter. She's a sounding board. We go back and forth even when it starts to get late. She keeps me on my toes, and I don't have to say too much sometimes at the end because she lays it all out, and I get to say, I did all that. I do. I do. I appreciate her. I do. I thank you.
Thank you, La.
Ms. LeVey, would you call for the vote, please?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass, 5-0. Moving on to voting representative for the annual October meeting of school representatives. Trustees, I need a motion for board representatives.
Benz, I, I motion that trustee Turner keep this position.
I second. We're open for discussion.
I just thought since we're all gonna, you know, we have a great momentum, let's keep it going.
I too agree.
I agree. Without any further discussion. Ms. LeVey, will you please take that vote?
Trustee Soto.
Soto, I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench.
LaFrench, I. Motion pass, 5-0. Moving on to section 3.02. Mr. Kraus will now take over.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Well, normally during this time, we recognize the outgoing officers and welcome the incoming officers. But however, we have a unique situation this evening where everybody remains in their current position, which is exciting. And so with that, I really don't have a lot to say because I want to open it up to the outgoing but incoming president, the outgoing and incoming clerk, and the outgoing and incoming board representative. And then after you all have a moment to say a few words, we have some refreshments. We'll take a few minutes break, and we have some refreshments in the back.
Okay.
So I'll turn it over to you, Madam President, for a few comments, and then the board representative and the board clerk.
Okay. I kind of touched bases a little bit before, just a few minutes ago. What I do want to say is, I do want to say thank you to my fellow board members for entrusting in me for another year as being board president. I want to say that during this time, I have seen enormous changes in us as a board. I do appreciate my fellow board members. I appreciate the work that is being done. I appreciate the respect that we have for one another. I have never had a time since I have been on the board where everything has been so cohesive, and I am appreciative for the board allowing me to represent our board for another year. And I can say that I get to keep my gavel that was specially made for me. It's all bedazzled. I want to thank them, so I don't have to turn it over to anybody. I'll keep it. But thank you very much. All jokes aside, I do have a lot of laughter in my heart. I enjoy advocating for children. I enjoy advocating for our family. That's what I'm here for, and I am appreciative for the position that I hold.
Good evening, everyone. I do want to start by saying thank you to my fellow board members. It is such a pleasure serving with each and every one of these individuals and especially representing our kids of Adelanto Elementary School District. Northside went a very long time without a representative, and I was very honored to step in as that representative. I also am really thankful to have a position in the upper cabinet of our Board of Trustees as it shows our representation is more heard. So I do want to thank my fellow board members for the opportunity of being a clerk for another year, and I look forward to seeing how many more amazing things we can do together.
Thank you.
Okay, well, I would just like to say congratulations, trustee LaFrench and trustee Webster. I've served on this board a number of years, and you've heard me say that for the first time in a very, very, very long time, I feel the camaraderie, you know, amongst all five of us. I feel that, you know, we all have individual ideas for the district, but I love the fact that we can come together respectfully and make decisions on what's good for our children in this district and our staff. And I would like to continue that momentum, and I think we're not, I think, I know we're headed in the right direction and under our leadership of our superintendent and our academic, our assistant superintendent of academic services, and soon we'll have a CBO, and assistant superintendent of HR. We have great things happening in Adelanto, contrary to what test scores may say. You know, I look at our children, you know, coming to this boardroom and performing in front of us, happy faces, not shy, and I see a future. I see a bright future. And I want to thank our parents, you know, for all you do, and the teachers and administrators for all you do. And it's a pleasure serving on this board right now. And, you know, as board representative, you know, I represent, I go down to the county once a year to represent the district in voting, and that happened just a couple months ago. And it was exciting to see my fellow board members down there. It was an honor to show Adelanto, I saw past and present employees and doing great things. I saw teachers now, assistant superintendents. I saw directors now county superintendents. They all came out of Adelanto, you know, so it was a pleasure to see that. So board, thank you. You know, I know we're going to continue to do great things, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Okay, so right now we will have a six-minute refreshment break. Guys are more than welcome.
Flowers. Look at here. One because I was outgoing and one because I came back in.
Interestingly enough, this is honestly the most unique situation I have ever encountered in my career. And so we would like to present you flowers for outgoing president and incoming president.
And thank you again.
Absolutely, and on behalf, on behalf of the district, we actually have this beautiful plaque for you as outgoing president. Thank you for your outstanding mentorship, leadership, and district governance to advance excellence in education and for your faithful commitment to our students, employees, and community from the district to present it to trustee LaSean LaFrench, board president. Here's a thank you plaque and a gavel for your outgoing. And since, give a round of applause. And since you are also incoming, we have the gavel for the incoming president, which happens to be you as well.
Oh, well.
Coincidentally enough, so congratulations, Madam President. I believe there's cake, and there's cake, and there's refreshments. This is the time to please go help yourselves, and staff will assist in dispersing the cake and refreshments for a few minutes here.
Thank you.
.....................................................................
Welcome back, everyone. If we can take our seats, welcome back. Welcome back, my friends from West Side Park. Moving right along to section four, staff reports and presentations, Mr. 303. Oh, I forgot about you, sorry. Moving on to section 3.03, annual organization appointment. Moving on to section three point zero three, annual organization appointment of the superintendent as secretary to the board. Trustees, I need a motion.
Trustee turn, I motion to approve.
Trustee Soto, I second that motion.
We're open for discussion.
Well, I mean, I do want to say that I appreciate Mr. Kraus and all that that he does. I don't want to be like crickets here, but he has has to be the secretary, Terry of the board. He has no choice. So thank, thank you, Miss, Mr. Kraus.
I echo trustee Ben's statement. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
I too. Thank you, Mr. Kraus.
I four.
I five.
Mrs. Lavey, please take the vote. Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee LaFrench. LaFrench, I, motion pass, five zero. Now, moving on to section four, staff reports and presentations, Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This evening, we'd like to call Mr. Jonathan Wilson up to the podium. And we have, we are excited to have Eagle Ranch Elementary School this evening, ready to present, and I know the kids are all excited. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. It's this one? You hear me?
Yes, it is.
Sorry, I'm waiting for my presentation to come in. There we go. All right. Good evening, Board President LaFrench, trustees and cabinet. My name is Jonathan Wilson. I'm the proud principal at Eagle Ranch Elementary School. So just a little bit about who we are over at Eagle Ranch. We're a TK through fifth grade school. We currently have five hundred and fifteen students. We have focuses on SEO, which is our social emotional learning, a focus on reading, and a focus on building community. So as you see here, we have a picture of our wonderful staff at Eagle Ranch. I just want to point out that what I show for the rest of these, the rest of these slides, cannot get done without the staff and the community and the students at Eagle Ranch. Without them, we truly would not be able to do the things that we do over there. So that's just a few of our staff members. That was for our first day of school. We had, we are wonderful assistant administrator, Mrs. Spivey made a frame for the staff members to come in and they took little pictures. They made like a back to school for the staff members collage, sir. So with that group effort comes our recognition for gold for PBIS last year. I am proud to say that in one year, we went from being not recognized at all to making the big jump to being recognized as gold. And once again, that could not be done without the work of our staff and our children and community members. So while gold is great, we are going for platinum this year. So that is an expectation of ours. To go with our theme of building a love for reading, we are, we brought back our one school, one book program that we were doing for our students. We've already done one book this year. We are doing two. The first one we did was Stella Diaz Has Something to Say. And if you're not familiar with what one school, one book is, every member of Eagle Ranch, every staff member, every student receives a copy of this book. It is theirs to keep. They can read along with their families at home. In fact, they're encouraged to. And we all follow the same pacing guide for the book. So it creates a conversation starter too amongst the, all the various members of Eagle Ranch. So our first book that we did is Stella Diaz Has Something to Say, and it focused on themes of friendship, resilience, and racial diversity. So that was really nice to see in that book there. Some learned a few Spanish words on there. So it was really nice to see. The next book that we are doing is called The Wild Robot, and we'll do that when we return back from winter break. And the themes for that one that are, we're focusing on are acceptance, courage, friendship, resilience, teamwork, and then going along with the district theme of kindness. We are always looking for guest readers boarding cabinet. So if you would like to come to our school to guest read to our classes, it's a really fun thing to do. I'll send you out some emails when we get that going. So you guys can sign up. No pressure or anything. So moving on some of the fun events that we've done this year to go with our building community theme, we had our Harvest Festival, which was a safer alternative to trick or treating, even though it didn't fall on Halloween. It was a great event for our staff and community members and students to come out and have a great time. As you see there, I did get pied in the face again this year, which is always for some reason a big moneymaker. I don't know why. I don't know why these kids want to pied me in the face so much, but they do. But it was a really fun time and you can see how packed everything was. There are a few pictures as well as we did our storybook costume parade the next day that are, which was on Halloween, excuse me. So there's a few pictures of that as well. We recently just held our science night. That was a great activity. That was a great event that our staff helped put together. There were some fun activities. We had all of our science projects displayed. We had six of our students advanced to the district level of the science fair. One of our students did take third place for fifth grade, so we were very proud of her. So those are the students pictured right in the middle. And then there are some other various pictures there of our NPR and the activities that we had for our students that night. They got broken. Oh, there we go. Here's just some various spirit wear days. We had crazy sock day. You probably can't see on there, but I'm very partial to the Bernstein Bears socks that were on there. The amount of creativity that was in that was very impressive. We recently just had our Santa hat day yesterday, as well as our wear red. So we have some updated pictures on there for that. As you can see, our community and kids really show out for these spirit wear events. Our fifth grade team recently did a study trip to Green Spot Farms. They had a great time. They learned many things about farming. They received a free pumpkin in which they in turn took to class and painted and decorated for Halloween. So they did that in the classroom and the kids had a fantastic time. I really like hearing about the great times that the students have on their study trips. And we have many coming up after winter break. So it'll be really good to see the students' reactions to that. And it always, it always baffles me how many students say they've never been on a bus, but we are a walking school. So students really enjoy getting on the bus. We did have our dress rehearsal for our winter performance this morning. This is just where the students get to watch the performances tomorrow at eight o'clock. Board members, cabinet, if you're available, please come on by. We will perform for our parents. And it is a great thing. It's at eight o'clock and it'll go till about nine thirty or so. It was really cute. They did a really good job. So we look forward to doing that tomorrow. And with that, we do have a small performance for you. We have some of our dance and cheer members from the AYA after school program. So I will invite them up to the stage now. We have cheer and dance combined. It is a little difficult to get out here, being so far out from there. So we do applaud the ones that were here. So they're going to do a kind of a combined performance.
Great job. Can we give one more round of applause for them? That's a hard thing to do up there.
Uh, so I, I thank everybody for allowing me to share just a little about, a little bit about.
I'm sorry, before they leave, can we take a picture with them?
Don't leave yet.
Please don't leave.
So I appreciate everybody just allowing me to share just a little bit about Eagle Ranch. You are all always welcome on campus and we look forward to seeing you soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, four point. Four point zero two, Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. We'd like to welcome Mayor Mind Kids this evening. They will be presenting to us. Looks like they're getting things ready to set up here. So we're excited to see what they have in store for us this evening.
While they're setting up board, do you have anything that you want to say for Eagle Ranch?
Well, I would like to say how I impressed I am at how brave they they are, you know, because you guys are now all over the internet and I love and parent, parents, I want to thank, thank you for take, taking the time to bring those tal- talented stu- students here so that we, we can watch, watch them. We real, really do appreciate, appreciate them.
I would like to say thank you for joining us tonight. It's always a pleasure to see our children come before the board and before the community and express themselves. And you guys did a phenomenal job tonight. You brightened up this boardroom with your colors and your dance and keep up the good work. Thank you so much to parents and teachers and awesome. Thank you.
Alrighty, I do want to take a moment and say thank you to Mr. Wilson for being out and giving us that amazing presentation. Thank you for sharing your students and their talents with us tonight as well. I want to make a special thank you to Senia over at After Action Youth America for what her and her team brings to our district every day for our students. I do want to say thank you to our students for coming up and performing, as I know it takes a lot of courage to do so. So once again, thank you.
I too concur. Beautiful presentation. And I, I, I appreciate the parents also being here. Mr. Wilson, thank you for your presentation as well. And I look forward to meeting and reading with the students as well.
Thank you. Okay, we're ready. Thank you. Okay, we're ready.
If you're ready, we're ready. Come on, come on up. We're excited. I like the little lab coats this evening. I know, I like the little lab coats this evening. Look at this.
Thank you. Our kids learn professional development and they'll demonstrate that. They'll give you a sample of core values which are essential skills that all workplaces require. They will also talk a little bit about the engineering design process that they use every day and they also journal every day. If you could just pass that journal, maybe they want to pass it, they can take a look. They have a writing exercise every day that they journal their daily progress every single day. So without further notice, can you have your robots to say hello? Columbia, we have the humanoid and the techtris just to say hello to the board before we get started. So while they're doing that, our students have learned to work as a team in everything they do. They've learned the engineering design process. They've learned programming and coding. They're introduced to artificial intelligence. And so everything you'll see here, you may have to stand a little bit because we used to do large tables and we couldn't bring those tonight. So we just want to give you a sample of our demonstration. Say hello to the robot.
Hello, robots.
Thank you. So I know our time is really short, so we have a lot to unpack. So the first thing we want to do is just demonstrate our professional development part of our program, our core values. Can, can we get a sample of core values? Give me a core value. Can you give these folks a core value? That means they're smarter than me. Okay, I don't, I'm not required to have all the answers because they do a lot of critical thinking. Can you give me another core value? Anybody raise your hand, give a core value? Yes. Yes, we have to share experiences with others and that's what we're doing. And everything we do, we honor the spirit of friendly competition. We need that in the workplace, right? Yes. And that's one of our most. We display gracious professionalism and cooperation. And what does that mean? Gracious professionalism and cooperation? Yes. We have fun. We have respect in everything we do. Yes. What we discover is more important than, I think that's one of the most important ones. Thank you Blake for that one. What we discover is more important than what we win. And one more? And we are a team. So we have fun and we are a team. So these are the professional development core values that we live by every single day. So the other item we want to introduce is the engineering design process and it's really important because becoming engineers, you have to follow a process every single day to ensure the quality, the commercialization of your project and to make sure it's well researched. Can somebody tell me what is the very first step that we work within the engineering design? Hey, everybody wants to. Yes, research and how do we use that? Yes, we research everything that we do. Second step of the engineering design process. Plan and how do we use that? Absolutely. Thank you. And the third step, let me go over here. Prototype and what is a prototype and how do we use it? We build and these are called your prototypes. And the next step? Test and how many times do we test? 10 times or more and why do we do that? And so that's done in every product, whether, whether you're developing a pair of tennis shoes or a car or automobile. We test and test in many domains and to make sure that that product is ready for the fifth step. And what is the fifth step? Commercialization and it's ready to go to market. Yes. What do you have? We show the world. Thank you very much. And can we now demonstrate the programming? Can you, can you just hold up your, can, first of all, we want to look at the different levels of robotics. So we have three different progressive levels here of robotics. The intermediate, the beginning is our Spike Lego. So this is for ages three, grade three through five. Can you just step up and have them look at your robot? So what they've done is they have designed a robot to perform on a mission table. We couldn't bring the table out, right? And they accomplish competition missions on a daily basis. And so we would like to demonstrate one of those robots, the mission on one of the robots. But before we do that, we want to introduce the next level. This is our Techtrics Prime for middle school. And our Techtrics Prime is designed for grades, can you pick it up and just show it for me? And it's designed for grades six through eight. However, Columbia Middle School was so advanced, we had to move them into our high school level robots. So as you can see, they have built the humanoid and they have learned to program these robots. They have learned to build them, program them, and they're going to demonstrate those for you tonight. So we would like to demonstrate the robot. I'm going to give you Blake. You, you want to describe what's happening with your robot and which one is it? Okay. So let's demonstrate the Techtrics first, Prime first. And what is your Techtrics Prime going to do?
It's gonna, it's gonna use to, you pick up these elements, the claws, like from ducks to wings and to little balls.
So that's the way the game is designed. So can we watch the programming and, and have it move for us and demonstrate? And is your program operating in which mode? Is it autonomous or teleop? Teleop. And teleop is?
Controlled by a controller.
Is the difference between, and what's the other type?
What's the other mode? Autonomous.
Autonomous. And what's the difference between those two modes?
One of them is running a program and the other one's run by a remote control.
Okay, so one of them is run autonomously and the Lego robots are all programmed. How? Are they autonomous or teleop?
The Lego robots are autonomous.
Good job, you guys. You make me so proud. Okay, so can we have the, the? Techtrics Max, the autonomous Techtrics Max demonstrated for us. So this is com- I'll, I'll talk while you're demonstrating. So this is a really complicated robot because here they learn electrical wiring in addition to designing and programming and wiring and preparing for competitions. This is a really complex. So we just stepped into this one. I was really surprised to see this come out tonight. I was unexpectedly, this was a huge unexpected for me because this robot was not supposed to come out until January, but we're, this group is at that level. Can we demonstrate the humanoid? So the humanoid is designed to communicate with you and it's waving and it wants to talk to you and it wants you to talk back to it. So that our next step will be stepping into AI where, where it will be taken on human form pretty soon. So this is the first step. And then we want to have our elementary students. Can we demonstrate your robot? Are we ready? So usually we have a robotic competition table. And so our students were so creative, what they did was they designed a pathway because we couldn't bring our table in. So they designed this pathway where they can program their robot to travel this pathway. So. And I just want to warn that sometimes we have technical difficulties. Can you demonstrate your robot? And, 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 and can the Westside Park? An Adelanto team come over? And we, and let's not let it run off the table. So it takes what teamwork, right? Oh, it's, that one is not charged. Oh, there you go. The most important thing is making sure those robots have power, right? So this is an example of the teamwork. So sometimes it takes a whole team to make this work. There you go. So it is following the path and it may be a little bumpy because it's on this table. But they're working with lines and sensors and. There you go. It's following the path. They have drawn their own path and they have programmed this robot. And typically this is not the environment. So this is exceptional, exceptional, exceptional work that they have made me even prouder because I wasn't sure how this little pathway that they created was going to work for them. I am so proud of you guys. This is absolutely awesome. It reads the map. So they're working with sensors and, and to follow lines and so forth. And it's the same technology that you would use in your automobile or your aircraft or, you know, any device or any mobile, any moving, your buses, your trains. It's the exact same technology that they're introduced to. So can you guys all set your robots on the table? So they can take a look at them? They can hold them? Why don't you, why don't you pass? There you are. There you are. Okay, let's look at those robots. Yes. So these are our future engineers. As a matter of fact, we just purchased this product because they were starting to get bored because we were supposed to stay with the Techtrics Prime, which is the small that's regulated to their age, but they have moved to the nine through 12 stages of robotics. So this is what the ninth graders use. Our high school students use the Techtrics Max. This is.
Columbia Middle School. My name is Jacob. I am kind and smart.
Absolutely.
I'm Joshua. I'm creative and smart.
Yes.
I'm Blake. I'm nice and strong.
Absolutely.
My name is Jackie. I'm smart and, and brave.
Absolutely.
My name is Damari and I'm smart and kind.
Yes.
My name, my name is Susan. I'm smart and generic.
Thank you.
My name is Azalea. I'm smart and creative.
You are awesome. Yes.
My name is Alana. I'm smart and kind.
Yes.
My name's Linnea. I'm impactful and an engineer.
You're impactful and you're an engineer. Absolutely.
My name's Soraya. I'm smart and beautiful.
Oh, yes, you are.
My name is Kevin. I'm smart and courageous.
Absolutely. So one of the things we do every single day when we start, this is not just a career pathway program, but we also are a self empowerment program. So every single day, the students are greeted with a, an exercise before they even walk through the door called Walk Through Your Door Greatness. Can one of you just demonstrate that? Just one of you? Yes. Any of you. You. Stand here and demonstrate with. So let's do walk, between the two of you, let's do Walk Through Your Door Greatness.
Something we use to.
Yes. Can you help them all or not? Linnea? Let's do a Walk Through Your Door Greatness.
Something we do to make people feel happy.
Yes. So can you show me how you do it? Can you do it for me? Yes. Yeah. So every day they get to do it with each other, Walk Through Your Door Greatness, and they say kind things and they affirm each other. And then they stand in their power and affirm themselves. So what they, what you just heard them do by introducing themselves, they stand in their power, they introduce themselves and they affirm their greatness. We appreciate you allowing us to present to you today. Do you have any questions for this team? I would like to introduce Ms. Jerry's is one of our instructional aides and all, also our technical trainer, Ms. Jerry Stockton. She's a little shy, but she is powerful and impactful. Do you have any questions for our students? Okay, can we, so we can, before we take the picture, can we do one millionaire, can you guys show them how to do a millionaire mind kid says? Can you just repeat after them? This, this is how we'll close our part of the program. A millionaire mind kid says, let's do a millionaire mind kid says for them. Are we ready? You want to do it Blake? Go ahead. Millionaire mind kid says. With, we are smart, powerful, nice. And millionaire mind kid says? We are scientists, technologists, engineers, mathematicians. Give yourselves a round of applause. You did excellent. Thank you. Thank you so much. You are powerful and you are my decision makers for the future. I'm very, very comfortable in handing my future to you. Thank you so much. Okay. Let's take a group photo. Photo op, photo op, Ms. Jerry. Stand forward and I'll stand next to you. Can we see all of our students and students in front? There we go. Do we have all of our students? Do you have all your robots up? Up where they can see the robot. Can't see everybody? Thank you. So I'm going to ask one of my parents to text me that picture. Thank you. Thank you for having us. We really appreciate being here tonight. You can give me back the lab coats. If, or you can remember to take them. Somebody put this in my hands. You don't want me to walk off with it. Somebody put this in my hands. You don't want me to walk off with it. Ready?
I just want to say that I love million mind kids and they empower me every day. Sometimes when I said when I'm sad, I like going to after school because they empower me and we do doors of greatness. It makes me feel good about myself. And I love programming because some people ask me. They asked me, how do you program? And I say, we program robots because you need to program a robot unless you just build a robot and it's not going to move. Actually, I'm going to tell you the basics, the basic steps of programming. First, you find an app or a website to use. I prefer apps because some websites give you viruses. I think you set everything up for what you're about to program. Third step, you program the you program the robot. Fourth step, you upload it to the robot. Fifth step, you make sure that everything's running fine and good. You test it about 10 times because that how many times you are supposed to test it. And I just want to say I love being in million air my kids.
Okay, we're going to move right along the section four point zero three so we can get a little bit on time. Okay?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This evening we will have a brief presentation, a couple of words from Dr. Dwyson on the Williams report for the first quarter. Dr. Dwyson.
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening. Ed code requires that the county annually visit all identified Williams monitored schools and report the findings on a quarterly basis. So the attached report includes first quarter findings for visits to our nine identified schools. In summary, there are four required areas: instructional materials, school facilities, school accountability report card, and teacher assignment monitoring. I'm happy to report that Adelanto Elementary School District had no findings in the four reported areas.
Excited to hear that. Thank you.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, for four point zero four, the same report, except what they do is they annualize all of these quarterly reports as Dr. Dwyson just mentioned. They put them into an annual report and going to let Dr. Dwyson just speak briefly on the annual quarterly reports for Williams.
Thank you. So this is a quarterly report for the board to re we're required to report out the number of uniform complaints in the following areas. This is related to Williams. So instructional materials, facilities, or teacher vacancies or missed assignments. This is a quarterly report and again, I'm happy to report that we had zero complaints in these areas from July to September of this academic year. Excellent. Section four point zero five.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Zach Clements to the podium with me and Mr. Sinatra, if you could fire up the first interim presentation, we will be presenting the first interim for the district. Mr. Sinatra, will you be able to forward the slides for me, sir? On the clicker? Ah, there we go. All right, thank you. Well, good evening, members of the board. Good evening, members of the public that are here in person and those of you with us out in Zoom land this evening. My name is Michael Kraus. I'm the superintendent of the Adelanto Elementary School District. With me, I don't know if he is he in the camera? I don't know if anybody can see him, but he's up here with me and I want to give him credit.
We can see it.
He's off to the side, but just want to make sure. Mr. Zach Clements is our Director of Fiscal Services, who also be with me this evening, talking about the first interim financial report and every year we have to present this in December to the board and to the community. We have certain reports. The budget report comes in June. We have unaudited actibles that are presented to the board in September. Every December, we do the first interim. And then the second interim report is done in March. And I have to thank Mr. Clements and his team in fiscal services because this is not an easy thing to do. There are countless hours, days, weeks, months that go into managing a budget of a school district, especially ours. And so I I don't know how many hours he puts in, never complains. His team never complains. They just do what needs to be done. And I just want to give them kudos as well because it's not a one person's show. It's it's really many, many people that that really contribute to helping keep the operations of the district going strong. And so with that, this evening, we're going to get right into the first interim report. So some of the things we're going to talk about tonight, as you'll see as we go through these slides, this evening, I'm going to have some extra slides. Normally, I have a first interim report that I present to the board and it's pretty much follows the same pattern because the the reports all are in the same, the same way that they're prepared. But we have some things that have changed that we need to discuss this evening that we'll talk about. And we are monitoring as we move forward. We'll talk about the certification of the first interim budget. And as you can see, the budget assumptions, the revenues, multi-year projection, and then some next steps. So as we move forward, we'll talk about these areas. If you have been following the news lately, you may have seen that the state of California back in April gave a filing extension to tax filers in the state of California to October of this year. So they didn't have to have their taxes filed in April. They could have an extension until October. When the governor came out with his budget in June and signed into law, there were still many unknowns. Were tax revenues going to come in as projected? Were they going to come in under, over? Where were they going to be? So until October came, everybody in the state was on a set of assumptions that they were going to come in at this amount. Well, that didn't happen. We'll see here in a minute. But what it did is change the cost of living adjustment that school districts are funded by every year. So what I wanted to show you is back in July, when we really, not us, but the state, didn't really know what tax revenues were going to come in. They gave us a set of COLA assumptions, cost of living adjustments. We prepare our budgets based on this information. As you can see, for twenty two, twenty or twenty three, twenty four in July, it's eight point two two percent for the current year COLA. We had a COLA in the next year of three point nine four percent. And then the following year, three point two nine percent. These were the assumptions that we were told to use because we follow what the state says, we follow what the County of San Bernardino Superintendent Schools Office says, we follow what School Services of California, they have a DART board, we follow all of these things and we create our budget that way. Well, the bad news is, is that when October tax revenues came in for the state, right now, currently, I haven't read the news today, but as of yesterday, the state is at a loss of sixty eight billion with a B, B I L L I O N, billion in tax revenues that they did not anticipate having. What that does is that affects school district budgets because we are funded by COLA. So now what we talk about is a re benching of the projected COLA. As you can see in December, the second line down there, this year it stays at eight point two two percent. Next year is projected to be at one percent. A complete two point nine four percent decrease in funding for school districts, not only us, but every school district in the state. And then on the third year out, it goes from three point two nine down to two percent. Now, we created our budget as we normally do in July. Ended on audited actibles using the top line because that's what we follow. We follow what the state puts out. We follow what the county puts out. We want to make sure that we are not making up our own numbers. So we do what we're supposed to do as we've always done. However, what we're seeing right now is a dramatic, dramatic, dramatic decline in potential revenues for school districts, as you can see here in twenty four, twenty five, and twenty five, twenty six. So the delta there in red is a percentage and that actually equates to millions of dollars to our district as well as many other districts. So when we created the budget in June and presented in June for the board, we did our own audit actials. We've done nothing wrong as a district to affect what's going on in the state. The state has a structural deficit problem currently. And until they decide how they're going to fix it, it trickles down to school districts, including ours. So there's really nothing that Mr. Clements and his team have done, the board has done, the superintendent's office, there's nothing we have done wrong. I want to make that absolutely clear. When we look at our numbers this evening, because this is being put upon school districts in the state, not just our district. All school districts will be cut funding potentially unless the state can figure out something to do. Now, the governor will come out with his budget in in January on January tenth. He's going to propose something else. He's got to figure out how to plug a sixty eight billion with a B, dollar hole in the state of California. We, if you might recall, a few years back, we had a hundred million dollar surplus in the state of California. And it disappeared just like that, just like that. It's gone. So the surplus flipped around. Now we're in the hole sixty eight billion and it's sort of growing. Every time they look at the tax revenues that are still coming in from late filers, it's not where it's expected to be. So what that does is, again, here's an article that came out from School Services of California, as well as Legislative Analyst Office, as well as CSBA, the California School Board Association, as well as AXA, Association of California School Administrators. They're all saying the same thing. It's up to fifty eight, fifty three billion when projections were used in development of current year budget, including our budget. Now they're projected to face sixty eight billion deficit up from fifteen billion when the budget was signed in June. So they were aware we would be in the hole a little bit, but fifteen billion is way more manageable than sixty eight billion. State of California had no idea they were going to be this far in the hole. And they don't have a piggy bank anywhere sitting around. They have some rainy day funds. But they don't have sixty eight billion dollars in funds sitting around somewhere. So they have to figure out how they're going to fix that, but it has a trickle down effect to school districts in the state. So here we get to the certification of our first interim report. Now, when we look at certifications for a school district, you have three options. You have a positive certification, which means you can meet your obligations, all your expenditures in the first year and the out the two out years. That's a positive certification. We have qualified, which means you can meet your obligations in the first year, the second year. But the third year, you're negative. You have to figure out something. Negative means you can't meet your obligations in the current year, the second year, or the third year. Okay? Now, Mr. Clements and I have had many, many conversations because there are many districts in the state that won't project that one percent COLA and that two percent COLA. We are not that district. Because if we said, oh, we believe it's going to be two point five or three percent in those out years, we'd be lying to the board, we'd be lying to our community, we'd be lying to everybody, we'd be fudging numbers. We wouldn't be transparent. We are transparent and in doing so, we are showing that third year is a deficit. And we are showing that here is the actual picture of our district due to what is going on in the state of California that we have zero control over as far as what they're doing up there in their their budget projections. So we do have a qualified budget at first interim. Can that change its second interim in March? Yes, it can. It can go back to positive based on what the governor may propose January tenth. But right now, as we sit here using the one percent and the two percent COLA that is recommended from the County Office of San Bernardino by Legislative Analyst Office by every other organization in the state for budgets, we put it in there because we wanted to show the true picture of where we're at in the sake of transparency. We don't like to present something that's not the truth. I will never do that in my career. I will walk away from this institution if I ever even think about fudging numbers, being untransparent, whatever have you. But I believe truly in transparency and making sure that everybody's aware of where we're at, how we got there. And again, I want to repeat because I know he has lost many nights of sleep over this and I have the full faith and support and confidence in our budget department and what they do. They work with our county office on a daily basis. They work with outside third party contractor to look at our budget as well. For many years, they've been doing this. And so I I believe in our numbers and I believe that this is where we're at. So you'll see in a second where we're at. And so again, qualified means we have to be able to, well, it means that a district is able to meet the two years, but not the third year out. Now, the bottom line down there, actions will have to be taken to mitigate the budget deficit. The county office will be working with our team to figure out, but they won't do it until after January tenth because January tenth is when the governor comes out with his budget, proposed budget for the next year. So if he proposes something that's going to fix our third year, then we don't have to really do much. We still have to tighten the budgets. We've been doing, we've been looking at all the areas and categories. But hopefully, we're optimistic, hopefully, that something will be done to lessen the blow to public education in the state of California. So when we look at it again, you can see here, we are using the assumptions that are out there in the professional organizations, as well as the state, as well as the County Office of Education. Eight point two percent COLA this year, one percent next year, two percent next year after that. One of the things Mr. Clements and I were talking about earlier today, a lot of districts, when they present the first interim this week, they don't do a presentation and they don't put it out there. You want to know why they don't put it out there? Because they want anybody to know the numbers. They don't want anybody to know that they're using one, two percent, or four percent, or five percent, or eight percent. Doesn't matter. They just want anybody to know it. They want to show that they're positive. They want everybody to think everything's okay. And we don't do that here. I'm just going to be honest with you. I I it's it's sad that people would do that, but we want to be as transparent as possible to our community and let them know where we're at and how we got there. Again, you can see the teachers retirement system. We have our percentages there, per, stirs, our lottery and our enrollment and then our average daily attendance. So this is what we project for our income as we move forward. And again, the only numbers that really have changed are the COLA, as you can see at the top there, from one and two percent. So what does that do? Well, here's our projected revenues expenditures for this year. You can see here our revenues and our expenditures as we are moving forward. And this, again, this is the combined. And here's where I want to get to where we're starting to have a multi-year projection on the unrestricted general fund balance. You can see there that the ending fund balance at the bottom down there, the first two years are positive in the black. Third year out, we are negative. So you can see there, which means that you can't be negative. You can be zero, but you can't be negative. I mean, we are, but we have to do things to mitigate that and fix that. And so we will be having conversations. We are going to start a budget stabilization team after tonight's board meeting. We will be inviting association members from ADTA, CSEA management team to get together to really come up with some ideas when we look at that third year out and try to determine how we can mitigate the effects of the COLA being reduced down to one and two percent. So that's where you'll see the red in that third year. That's why we are presenting a qualified budget this evening. And then the breakdown shows you the non-spendable, the stores, the reserve. So we have to keep a three percent reserve. You see the reserve for uneconomic uncertainties, it's there. So when we add that in there and then you can see it then puts our ending fund balance projected on assigned at negative eight million. So we're looking about nine million, Mr. Clements, at this time that we would have to make up working with the county and determine that third year out, if the COLA stays at one percent, if the COLA stays at two percent, and if they decide not to fund LCFF any more than what they are currently projecting to do. So that's what we're looking at right now. And that is why we are projecting a qualified budget this evening to the board and the community. And then we have our restricted money again, which is made up of mainly the ELOP grant, a lot of the categorical funds that Dr. Dwyson and Dr. Choa and her team manage. And so that's a different situation because that's categorical money that is specifically tied to various things, different categories. It's not general fund and generally, that's pretty stable when it comes to funding coming into the district. It's just the base LCFF state revenues unrestricted that is the fluctuation in the state of California. So again, here you can see the combined budget summary for the multi-year projections. And you see when we put the restricted and unrestricted together. So what are the next steps? What do we need to do? What are what are we doing? Actually, we've been doing it. We've been monitoring and working with the county. We're going to get an update on the governor's January revise of the of the state budget. He's going to have to do something. We're hoping he has to. I don't think it's fair to our kids. It's not fair to our community in any any school district in the state to take such a massive hit of educational funding without any kind of warning that that's what it was going to be. Again, I don't know that the state could predict sixty eight billion in a deficit, but that's where we're at. We're going to be looking at a budget stabilization process, work with the county in our team, our internal team as well. The second interim financial report will come in March to the board, March before March fifteenth. And we've already been working on budget development, but we we really don't know the parameters right now to the governor throw something out at us in January tenth. So but we kind of have the template ready for what we're looking at this evening. And then in May, comes up with the May revise. And that could change with whatever he throws out January tenth. And that's the unfortunate thing about budgets in the state of California. In January, the governor just proposes something. We don't know what's actually going to be signed into law till June fifteenth. By June fifteenth, the legislature has to vote and approve it. So we create our budget, though, and we bring it to the board in June, not knowing what the final budget is actually going to be. And that's the way it's been for years. So we create our budget though, and we bring it to the board in June, not knowing what the final budget is actually going to be, and that's the way it's been for years. And so you can see there in June of next year, we will bring the, uh, budget for adoption to the board. And we're optimistic. We're, we're trying to stay optimistic because the holidays are coming and we don't want to, you know, not be optimistic going into the holidays, but until January tenth, uh, there will be no new information for us or any other district in the state until, uh, the governor proposes the, uh, January budget for twenty-four, twenty-five. And so I know this evening, it's not exactly the best news that we wanted to present to you, uh, this evening to the board. But again, in the sake of transparency and honesty, uh, we will never do anything to make any year that is, is negative look like it's positive. Because that is not fair to our community. It's not fair to the board to think that everything's okay when it's potentially not based on, again, this is on paper, based on what the governor is throwing out there with the COLAs of one and two percent. And so we will continue to monitor it. And, uh, again, that's a third year out. So we have two years. But I, I, I believe that we'll be able to fix this in this, uh, upcoming, uh, quarter. January, February, March, once we know what the governor's going to throw out there and hopefully, um, hopefully fix the sixty-eight billion dollar deficit that continues to grow. It wasn't that big a few weeks ago, and then all of a sudden it bloomed up to sixty-eight billion. So I'm afraid to watch the news today because I don't want to see what it's up to now. Um, but hopefully he can stop the, the blood flow of the, uh, deficit and then work on solutions together with the state legislature to, uh, keep education funding. If we kept education funding where it was status quo, we'd be okay as a district. Because that's how we budget. We budget a tight budget. I want to make that clear too. We do a tight budget for the, for one reason. We want to make sure we're fiscally solvent. We want to make sure at the end of the day, we're not holding on to money that we don't need to be holding on to that can be spent on our students and our staff. And so that's why we always run a tight budget and any fluctuation in the state will affect that one way or the other. And so in this case, unfortunately, it affected it negatively, um, because of the sixty-eight billion dollar deficit. But we're, again, we're optimistic and we look forward to the next steps with the governor's office coming out on January tenth. And with that, I'll take any questions. Mr. Clemish and I will take any questions the board may have.
Okay, my question is, what percentage of COLA would we need to have a positive budget moving forward?
Thank you for your question, Trustee Turner. Sorry, it was up there, but when we, when we looked at the three point nine four, because that's what we had predicted, and then the three point two nine in those two out years, uh, we were solvent and I think we had about eighty-six thousand dollars, give or take, on that third year out. I mean, we run a tight budget for sure. Uh, that would have kept us solvent if they'd have kept it at status quo. So those are the numbers that without any budget mitigations, uh, those were the numbers we would need to stay solvent. Three point nine four COLA and the three point two nine COLA that we originally had, uh, projected, uh, back when we did the budget and when we did an audit at actuals. Now, if we do some budget mitigations, uh, we could, uh, stand to lose, uh, some money and, and increase the bottom line a little bit to stay on the positive side, but until we know what he's going to propose in January tenth, uh, we don't really know what that may look like.
Cause so when we approved the budget in June, we were under the, we knew that we had a problem, a deficit problem, right?
Our, our district did not know, ma'am. We, we were about eighty-six thousand positive.
It kept going down and down and down. You weren't aware of that?
That our, our budget was going to?
No, that the state was in a financial position.
Oh, oh, yes, yes, Trustee Turner. We did know that. We just didn't realize, I don't think anybody that I've talked to knew it was going to be this bad. Uh, we, we had heard fifteen, twenty billion, which we could have probably withstood because COLA wouldn't have been decreased by that much. But then when sixty-eight billion come out, I believe I was at CSBA down in, uh, or up in San Francisco when the news came out. And there were many superintendents and board members there, and you probably heard when they were all checking their emails, a collective, wow, this is absolutely insane. And the conversations really started, uh, you know, end of November, early December about this is worse than anybody could have even predicted or imagined.
I'm looking at the gen, on page eleven, general fund combined budget summary. And looking at this, the excess deficit goes off three years. But you mentioned that we were positive, we're positive the first, first, first year, second year, but we're not the third year. The third year is what's giving us a qualified budget. Am I correct in that?
That is correct. And this is the combined. So we're spending down our, our restricted monies as well in here. So a deficit is, is spending more than you have, but it's also spending down excess money that you've collected from like, uh, ELOP or ESTER funds that you may not spend in the current year, but you're trying to spend them down. So it shows that you're spending more than you're taking in because you might have took it in, in a prior year.
Okay. Now you, you mentioned budget mitigation. Do you, to be honest, sixty-eight billion dollars is a lot of money to recoup from now until January tenth.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we, are we going to, I guess what I'm saying is, and I know you mentioned a budget committee.
Yes, ma'am.
That will have both the union presidents and, and attendants also, will we have community members in that as well?
We will, i- yes, ma'am. We have a broad swath of people, uh, that we will invite to the meetings, absolutely, and hope that they're able to, uh, join us for these discussions.
This is grim. This is very grim. When does our second interim come out?
March fifteenth or before March fifteenth. It'll be presented to the board. Uh, Ms. Leve, I'm not sure of the March board meeting, but the first one in March. Uh, it'll have to be before March fifteenth. And it will be potentially, uh, different based on what comes out January tenth from the governor's office. Whatever efforts that he is going to throw at the deficit in the state, uh, will hopefully trickle down positively, uh, to school districts, including ours.
Say that, that last part again, I'm sorry.
If the governor's able to plug some of that hole at least, hopefully those effects will trickle down to our school district as well, so that at second interim, uh, we will be positive again.
And, um, but we will be looking ahead to mitigate this, so we will have a positive budget.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And that means a lot of cuts.
Yes, ma'am. On paper at this time, yes, Trustee Turner.
That's all I have. Thank you for your report. I'm glad that, you know, um, ugly news is better than not having it. We need to know what's going on and make our community aware and be transparent. Now, what I, okay, I'll just keep that comment to myself right now. Okay, but thank you so much for your report.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
A great presentation. Thank you for the transparency and letting us know how we're going to be in the next upcoming years. I did have a question on the Delta on page three. Can we just get a little definition on what that means for us?
So as far as the COLA is concerned, I put that line on there to show you how much the cost of living adjustment is, uh, is, is reduced based on the current assumptions, based on the sixty-eight billion dollar deficit. Those numbers potentially could change, but it equates to millions of dollars in losses for us. I don't have the exact figure here. Um, but it's, it's in the millions in losses, um, when we look at our numbers. Just, I know that two point nine four percent and one point two nine don't seem like a lot on paper, but when you have over a hundred million dollar budget in a school district and the COLA is reduced by that much that you anticipated that funding, now you're not going to get it. See, we also anticipate revenues, but at the same time, we assign expenditures to those revenues based on what we're being told from the state, right? And so now the reduction in COLA there to potentially those numbers equates to millions of dollars in, in our budget in revenues. So we have to look at potentially millions of dollars in cuts. Potentially, again, I say that because I don't know what's going to happen on January tenth. That's the next time that we'll know. These numbers could change, uh, they could be less. And, uh, but at the same time, we still need to look at budget stabilization, uh, ideas. In the event that he can't do anything, for instance, right? Say it stays at sixty-eight billion or it goes to seventy-two billion. Then he's even a worse position and then it'll trickle down to districts. That two point nine four could go the wrong way, which we hope not, but unfortunately, right now, as we're sitting here currently, that's the assumptions that are in the entire state.
Got it. Delta is just a prediction of how much you're going to be losing.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Yeah, like, um, I'm sure how we're all feeling. It's very upsetting to hear this news. It's a lot of money for our teachers, for our students, for our staff. Thanks for the presentation.
Yes, Trustee Soto, thank you.
Uh, could you describe to me just, just brief, briefly the bud, budget sta- stabilization process? Like what may that entail?
Absolutely. So once we are able to assemble a team, which will start tomorrow, inviting community members, as Trustee Turner mentioned, uh, union, uh, leaders, uh, management team and others to, uh, come up with ideas that, there are many ways to potentially look at reducing a budget. Um, not that we want to do that, but at some point, the county's going to potentially require districts to present a plan of mitigating the third year. I promise you, we're not the only one in the state this week that is presenting a first interim with a qualified budget, um, because of what just was put upon us. And so what we'll have to do is just come up with ideas and ways. Once we have a estimated dollar amount, Mr. Clemish and his team will be, you know, on the team as well to talk about that. And then once we know that for sure, until January tenth, uh, we can start looking at ways, uh, to mitigate the budget, uh, expenditures that we have to reduce. Because again, if our revenues are reduced, we have to reduce our expenditures in order to bring it in line with that third year out. Even if we're at zero, even if we have exactly revenues and exactly expenditures down to the penny, I'd take zero rather than being in the hole. So, um, that's what we'll have to look at doing potentially. And the county, again, will want a plan, uh, from school districts that have a qualified in that third year out. Even though they're well aware and we have conversations with them, they know why. They know exactly why. They've told us. We, we understand. We know exactly what's going on, but at the same time, there's a process that districts are required to follow when, when the budget is showing a negative in a third year out.
Okay, thank, thank you. I just think it's tragic where we had a surplus not that long, long ago, and now it's overdrawn. So thank, thank you. I don't have any questions at this time. We've already spoke. This is a pretty sad moment right now. I pray for positivity for January the tenth, what I'm looking forward to. I do appreciate your transparency, um, and we need to, uh, wait a few more days, I guess, and see just how devastating this is going to look.
Yes, Madam President. And, and another note, in the first board meeting in January, on January sixteenth, after the governor's budget has been presented, uh, we will have those assumptions and we will present an unofficial projection to the board. Uh, because we internally can do an unofficial budget projection once the numbers change. Although second interim is our next official presentation to the board. But January sixteenth, once we know, uh, what he's proposing, we have spreadsheet that he just plugs in, I mean, just like, wow, changes it instantaneously. And that'll show us our third year out based on what he says in January tenth. We'll present it to the board. So again, knock on wood, it's hopefully going to plug that hole to where we don't have to really start looking at too many things to mitigate the, uh, deficit on a third year out.
Okay.
Soon will you put together your budget team?
Uh, we're going to start, uh, uh, inviting people tomorrow.
Okay.
And although I know that this is the last week that, uh, we are here until after the winter break, uh, we will hopefully by Friday have a team, a pretty hefty team. We'll let the board know who's on the team and we'll invite board members if they're available to also be on the team.
Okay.
And, uh, at that point, uh, we will hopefully meet, uh, the first week in January, uh, when we come back January third and, uh, before the tenth, just to start having more conversations. You know, because we need ambassadors, we really need ambassadors to be able to tell the story of what's going on to our community. I know a lot of people don't get the opportunity to hear us here or attend our board meetings, but, um, and then lobby the state. The only thing I can recommend is just call your legislature, call your assembly member, your senator, lobby them to really take a look at, and, and I know they're going to have to cut, but just lobby them to really look at not affecting education because it's not fair to our students at the end of the day. And I know there's a hole. I get it. I understand it as much as anybody, but it's just, you know, to me, it hurts my heart, you know, for our kids, right, and our staff to know that in general, education is underfunded anyway before there's a deficit in the state. And now with a deficit this big, it's only going to affect that, you know, the ability of our staff to do their job and our students to really learn because it, it, it takes away funding. And it's, it's, again, as you stated, it's, it's sad to hear.
Thank you for that presentation. Before we move on to, um, section five, at this time, I would like to ask for, um, a moment of silence. We lost one of our, um, trustee, um, members two years ago. Um, and I wanted to do a moment of silence and honor, um, trustee Hunter. I was waiting after the celebration of our children. I don't know whether or not if they would quite understand it. Um, but at this time, I would like to honor trustee Hunter with a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. The heavy heart, of course. We lost trustee Ekis last year. So it's at this time that I would like to do a moment of silence in trustee, um, Ekis' honor. And trustee Ekis is very much missed. At this time, we could do a honor silence and on her behalf as well. Thank you. Moving on to section five, cabinet reports, Mr. Cross.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This evening, to get started, it's hard to follow after those two moments of silence. I remember fondly both of those trustees and, and, uh, they, they are missed and will never be forgotten. And we do have memorials, uh, to them in our foyer and we have a photo up here as well. And so, uh, their, their memory and legacy will live on. But I want to take a moment to thank our board up here, uh, for all the support, all the hard work that they have provided to myself and our team over this last year. It hasn't been easy. We faced many challenges together. We will continue to work through our challenges, but also celebrate our successes as we move forward into twenty twenty-four. And I truly appreciate, uh, all of the hard work. I want to start with trustee Turner. Trustee Turner has been on the board the longest and, and her wisdom and knowledge of our district and the operations and the history, uh, have been invaluable to the work that I do. I appreciate her always, uh, putting up with me, asking questions that, you know, sometimes she's like, you should know that, but I don't know everything. And she has a lot of great knowledge that I truly appreciate, um, her sharing with myself, with Dr. Dwyer's on, with our team, uh, this last year. I look forward to her being the board representative this next year as well. And then we have trustee Love French, president Love French. Uh, I've come to know her very well this last year. I appreciate all of the work she has done with agenda settings with me. Uh, we've had many opportunities to have discussions about, uh, many things going on in the district. We've done site visits. I did site visits with trustee Turner as well. I appreciated those very much. Uh, trustee Love French and I have had a lot of fun out there with the students and had a really great year collaborating, uh, on bringing forth on the board meetings and the board agendas. Uh, many, many great things that are beneficial to our students and our staff at the end of the day. And so I just want to thank you for the work that you've put in as well. And I know I look forward to twenty twenty-four with you as well. Down on the end, trustee Benz. It's been great working with you. I appreciate, uh, learning about Hogwarts. I was never a Harry Potter fan. But, uh, if I get this wrong, don't, don't be mad at me, but I think you're a Raven's Claw. Does that sound right? Raven's Claw? Ah, I did good. Okay. So I appreciate you, uh, enlightening me to other things outside of my norm. And, you know, you, you and I have had many great conversations this past year. And, you know, that's one of the things I think we get stuck into is our same old routine and rut and thinking. And, you know, I've really tried to expand my horizons and learn about other things that maybe I just never, you know, were interested in. And so Hogwarts was interesting to learn about because it, it, you know, they say it stimulates a part of your brain that, you know, may not be stimulated. So, uh, but I appreciate our site visits. I appreciate your wisdom as well throughout this past year. I look forward to working with you, uh, in twenty twenty-four. Trustee Soto, newest member of the board. I'm very excited to have you on board as well and working with you. And you have a lot of knowledge and wisdom to share with us as well as we, as our team moving forward. And I appreciate your dedication to the board and the, what you have and bring to this dais as well. And I look forward to working with you in 2024 and excited. And again, don't hate me, but happy birthday to you. Today's his birthday, so wanted to wish him a very happy birthday, even though it's mainly over, but many more on that. So I appreciate all your work on that. And then trustee Webster, I appreciate your work as the board clerk. I know there's been a lot of signatures this past year, things that you've had to sign, but now you get to look forward to exercising your writing pen even more this next year. So looking forward to that. And we've had many conversations about operations in the district as well. And I look forward to many of those. And I want to thank you for your work and dedication to our district and helping move us forward. And as you stated this evening, representation in area five, you do a great job of doing that for a long time. They're, they've had its largest area. And so I appreciate all the work that you do for area five out there. I would be remiss without thanking Dr. Dwyson this evening for all of the work that she does for us and academic services and her team. It has been such a blessing to have her on our team. The work that she does is invaluable to help our students succeed and move forward. And I couldn't do this work without her. She has just been a blessing to all of us, I think, up here as well as the board. And I know that the staff really appreciate all of the knowledge and wisdom that she brings and dedication and passion to our profession. And finally, there's one more person on this board that makes my life go round. And without her, I, you know, I couldn't survive on a daily basis. That's Exenia Levey, the executive assistant down in the end. She puts up with me, I don't know how, but she does on a daily basis. And I just want to say thank you to her. Her dedication and passion for many years to the district and what she has done for us and for our team has been invaluable. It's not easy, the work that we do, but she does it with a smile every day. And she recently celebrated anniversary, so I want to say happy anniversary to her and Michael, her husband, Michael. It's always nice to celebrate the things in life like that. They're, they're so important. And, but again, I want to thank her for all of the things that she does for me because I so look forward to coming to work every day. You have to love what you do. And I truly love what I do. I don't love giving news like I did tonight at First Interim, but I love what I do because at the end of the day, I have such a great team that I work with. I have such a great staff out there, working at our school sites, our classified staff, our certificated staff, and just seeing our students on a daily basis. It just really warms my heart to go out there and, and be with them. This week, unfortunately, we had a lockdown at George and West Side Park. And I was able to go out there and, and visit with our students. And, and it was such a well-run operation at both sites during the lockdown. I just have to thank our, our administration and our teachers and classified staff at both of those sites for the work that they did and the work they do on a daily basis to help our students move forward and succeed. It's just wonderful. But again, Ms. Levey, thank you so much. My hat off to you. I look forward to many more years and we will retire together. That's what we keep saying, that we will retire together. So we're excited about that. So I appreciate everyone listening to my heartfelt thank you, but I don't, I don't have the opportunity to really, I say thank you a lot, but I just want to recognize those, all of you, the board and Dr. Dwyson and Exenia, because the, the work that you all do and it really means a lot to me. So just don't ever think that what you do is not important because it does not go unnoticed. So I do truly appreciate that this evening as we move into the new year. I did want to say that our pool is going along very well. And we are looking on track for May, May of 2024 to have it open. So I want to thank Richard and the M and O team for really helping move that along this evening. They really doing a great job out there. We had the opportunity to engage with the Adelanto Parade, Christmas Parade this past weekend. And we did have a float in there. We were excited. And we also had 10 schools participating in the cheer teams. You had a little bit of the cheer team here this evening. AYA Action Youth America does a great job with their after-school programs. We had great representation for our students. They just did an outstanding job out there. And we had three board members on our float. And I heard the driver did very well. So I, I was excited about that because you never know with, with a driver, if they're gonna, you know, follow all the laws of the road. And, oh, it was me, by the way. So, but I have to say, I did pretty good. Nobody fell off and everybody made it to the end. And, you know, it was a good, good time. So, but it was great seeing all of our students out there on the parade. So I was excited about that. I want to thank Ms. Lawhead this evening. Ms. Lawhead is a teacher in our district. And I got to tell you something. Every year, she thinks about the board administration and she usually gets us coffee. This year, she gave us coffee cards. And so we're excited about that. But Ms. Lawhead, if you're listening out there, if somebody sees her, talks to her, let her know that we truly appreciate her thinking about us at this time of the year. It's very much appreciated for doing that. Also, we had the opportunity to recognize our science fair winners at Columbia Middle School. This was district-wide science fair. So we're excited about that. We gave out certificates and medals. At the January sixteenth board meeting, we will be recognizing the first, second, and third place winners for the science fair. So we're excited about that. And then lastly, some very exciting news. I like to brag when, when people deserve to be bragged on. We have, we have many great teachers in this district in many different grade levels, many things that they do, and we appreciate all of them. Once in a while, we get the opportunity to have one recognized. And it's an exciting time when one of our own made it to the top 10 finalists in the educator of the year. We have a science teacher at Columbia Middle School. And this person, I'll say their name in a minute, is outstanding in the classroom. If you get a chance to go visit their classroom, the experiments they do with the kids, the passion they bring to the classroom. Now, the educator of the year is San Bernardino County, Riverside County, Inyo County, and Mono County. So it's four counties that people are recommended for submitted, submit something for them to become educator of the year. So you have four counties, many school districts in those four counties. We had the science teacher from Columbia Middle School make the top 10 finalist in the entire four counties. It's just absolutely outstanding. An independent panel that has nothing to do with us selects the teachers. And we, we just want to say thank you so much for all their hard work and dedication. Their name is Haley Filosi, and they are an outstanding teacher at Columbia Middle School in the Science Department, teaches seventh grade science. And I want to thank Ms. Carrie Kozart, the principal of Columbia Middle School. Columbia has just been outstanding this year with the students, the staff, the work that's going on over there. And this is just another feather in Columbia's cap to show the dedication that the staff over there have to our students. And so on, on January sixteenth, again, we will be recognizing Ms. Filosi for making it to the top 10 finalist in the educator of the year award. And so again, Adelanto is on the move. We are moving forward in a positive way. And again, I, I am so proud to be up here on this dais with all of our board members and our assistant superintendent of academic construction, Dr. Dwyson. And that completes my comments. And I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Dwyson. Thank you so much.
I don't know if I can follow that. Thank you. So, good evening. I'm gonna actually start and share some highlights from human resources first this evening. Our human resources department managers were able to represent the district and met with the community at Spiritfield Church in Hisperia on November 29th, where they met with over 140 job seekers to expand our applicant pool. They collaborated with Claremont Graduate University to establish a teacher residency program. Very excited about that. Our HRT members attended credentials workshop. It was put on by our county credential services department. They attended a PK three community circle put on by the California Department of Education, which the PK community circle is intended to be a space for discussion, information sharing, and connecting about the PK three early childhood credentials. So there are pathways to that. And so we try to stay up to date on those things. We are busy preparing for the upcoming secretary clerk meeting in January. The HR department conducts biannual training for our classified employees to provide opportunities for continuous professional learning. All positions in the fiscal department were filled this past month, and they are back to being fully staffed in our fiscal department. So we want to thank them for their hard work in there. And as of today, we have 166 active substitute teachers, 146 classified substitutes, and 325 board-approved volunteers. Now for some highlights from academic services, I'll start with our special education department. We've been very busy putting systems and structures and protocols in place. I want to thank our administrative team, Dr., almost Dr. Guthrie, and Ms. Regina Clausell. So they rolled out new referral procedures for special education aligned to academic and behavior. CEAS was rolled out. We had a little bit of a rocky start, but we are getting teachers trained and supported in that area. We still have some areas to work out. Academic Services, Special Education, Student Services collaboratively with district teachers and administrators are revamping our student study team protocol and procedures. So we want to make sure that's streamlined so that we intervene early, give students what they need, and make sure that it's not an exhaustive process, but that we are thorough at the same time. We've rolled out special ed administrator meetings monthly. That's to make sure we're on the same page with procedures, protocols, and updated laws as it relates to special education. And parent support network meeting, those are new this year. And that was held in November, the next one's in January, to support our families and provide them with education as it relates to special education. On November 20th, the academic services team was able to provide 30 families with turkey, pies, and a big grocery bag of side dishes for the Thanksgiving holiday. We want to thank our management team, ADTA, for donating 30 turkeys, 60 pies for our 30 families. And a big thank you to our AYA Millionaire Mind Kids for volunteering and helping to hand out these items to families. This Saturday, we're gonna hold our annual Winter Wonderland event for our Foster and McKinney Vento students from 10 to 1 at Mesa Linda Middle School. We'll have giveaways, games, fun, and food. On December 7th, we've already mentioned the science fair. All fourth through eighth grade, first and second place winners go on to the county fair, which will be held on March 8th. All of our schools have now been trained to administer the eye-ready diagnostic. I look forward to bringing a more thorough presentation to the board in January with some updates on our first administration and a look at the first set of data as we roll that out in January. And while we have a break next week, we do, I do want to remind all of our families watching that we do have intercession available to all of our students in the district. You can sign up at your local school with the after-school program. We have programs running at Adelanto, Braddock, Eagle Ranch, Ted Vic, and West Creek from 8:15 to 5:15 each day all next week. So even though Friday we're out, we have availability all next week. There is also a web you can sign up on the website as well. January 3rd, choice school applications open for the 2425 school year. January 8th, enrollment applications open for all schools on the 20, for the 2425 school year. We're collaborating with Victor Union, who's going to hold an enrollment fair at the fairgrounds on March 9th, trying to make an easier process for our eighth-grade families to transition to the high school. So as I conclude, I want to just say thank you for the opportunity to work in this amazing district with the board and superintendent who does support our work and the amazing academic services team who work hard every single day. I am truly grateful for you all. And I want to wish everyone a very wonderful holiday season and a happy new year as we look to great things in 2024.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Moving along to section six, closed session declaration. We will be taking item 6.02 through 6.06 into closed session. Public testimony before closed session? The public comment period. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for the members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only must complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Public comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comment, and although the board of trustees cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, the board of trustees listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Although a public speaker can additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removal, removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentations depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Mr. Kraus, do we have a speaker from ADTA?
Yes, Madam President, we'd like to call Ms. Jennifer Rader up to the podium this evening.
Welcome. Just a little red button. The bottom, there you go.
Okay, are we, are we live? Okay, great, thanks. Okay, thank you. I want to say thank you first, and they're not even here anymore. But for the audience, thank you to Eagle Ranch kids for their presentation. They did a great job. And the Millionaire Mind Kids are really impressive. So good work to them, too. Thank you, Mr. Kraus, for the interim report and for explaining it in such a way that laymen can understand it. One important fact to remember is that the 8% COLA for 2023, 2024 is already fully funded. And that is still the year that we are currently negotiating. Our school district is not in declining enrollment, and those children will always need teachers. We absolutely must stay competitive with other districts to attract and retain highly qualified teachers. This week alone, we lost one wonderful candidate who would have been a great sped teacher because Apple Valley offered better salary benefits, a signing bonus, and a sped stipend. Sped concerns are particularly, sped concerns me particularly right now because we have so many positions in sped filled with long-term subs. Our certificated sped teachers have to absorb all those IEPs for those students in those classes. And our RSP teachers are also responsible for assessing students who are being referred to sped and write those initial IEPs. They are overworked and exhausted, and a few have told me they're considering leaving. Also sped is a concern because there is so much legal involved. And where legal is involved, there are costly lawsuits. So we absolutely must keep a priority of maintaining our special ed timelines. This interim report was very difficult news to absorb. I know, but we need to keep perspective. Our district is not declining in enrollment, and we are working hard to improve our attendance rates. We will weather hard times together, but we need to take care of our people or we will lose them. That being said, I have some fun news to share. Recently, ADTA was able to give away hundreds of books at a few district harvest festivals and literacy nights. This was provided by a grant from CTA, and we're hoping to be able to expand this program to get a new book in every child's hand courtesy of ADTA. Safety concerns are foremost on our minds tonight. Some teachers are being, are still being physically or verbally assaulted by students or parents on virtually every campus. There needs to be swift action taken and strong consequences for this. AESD needs to stand up to, stand up to protect our teachers. We have, oh, I meant to bring it up with me. We have an emergency response guide, and it's fairly comprehensive, but we need clear and concise protocol for addressing softer threats. We have a fabulous IT department that we can use to identify students who might be sending up red flags with their internet use. Every one of us, students and teachers alike, signed an acceptable use agreement for using the internet at school. And there needs to be an immediate response to violations of that contract. When dangerous situations arise in the neighborhoods, as did yesterday around our schools, our emergency response guide, the one that I left over there, should be closely and consistently our emergency response guide, the one that I left over there, should be closely and consistently followed. The difference between lockdown procedures and secure procedures can spell the difference between a lost day of learning or an adapted day where kids' movements are limited for their safety, but learning continues. At George, some classes were under their desks for the whole time, hours. And in some classes, kids were using the buckets that we have to relieve themselves. Those are emergency in case of like disaster, like serious disaster, statewide earthquake disaster kind of thing, and that's what they're for. And the kids were using those to relieve themselves, and that seemed, um, it didn't seem like what staying safe looks like, not with George being a closed building with interior hallways. So the protocol should have been consistent across the board, and it should have been more reasonable for being a safely enclosed space. It is still a concern that we are not fully staffed, especially through all our leadership positions. Mesa Linda is a school that needs a strong hand of decisive leadership more than anywhere else, and yet we don't have a principal. Here's hoping twenty twenty-four brings us some terrific candidates. I'd like to take this opportunity to wish Mr. Soto a happy birthday and to wish everyone a happy holiday season and a safe winter break. I hope many teachers and staff will be able to attend the snowy summit on Thursday, but I myself will be preparing for our holiday program at Morgan Kincaid. Good evening to all of you and have a terrific night.
Mr. Kraus, do we have anyone from CSEA?
Mr. Sinatra, do we have anybody in, uh, online raising their hand? I don't, I don't see anybody, Madam President, in person, but we're checking online.
I do not see anybody at the moment, no.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sinatra. Not at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have any audience members?
Madam President, not for closed session. Pardon me, sorry about that. I was in mid, mid-sentence, not at, not at this time for closed session, Madam President.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we'll move on to section eight, recess to closed session. Um, can I get a motion?
Bens, I, I motion, we, we recess to closed session, session.
So do I, second that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Leve. Please take the vote.
Trustee Soto.
So do I.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I, motion pass five zero. The time is seven forty-three. We're into closed session. Welcome back. The time is nine forty-four, and we will reconvene to open session. I'd like to make a note that, um, at nine twenty, trustee Soto left. Nine point zero one, Ms. Leve, can we call to order? Take a roll call, please.
Trustee Benz.
Present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee La French.
La French, present, forms establishes four with nine twenty total left. We voted to extend the meeting. It was, um, first by Benz to extend to eleven, second by Ms. Turner. Um, yes, from trustee Webster and yes, from La French. Moving on to section ten, closed session reports. We didn't have anything to report out. Section eleven. Mr. Kraus, do we have any speakers for public comment from ADTA?
Let me check, Madam President. Mr. Sinatra, do you see anyone in, uh, online raising their hand for ADTA this evening? I don't see anybody in the audience.
I do not see anybody online at this time, no.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sinatra. Not at this time for ADTA, Madam President.
So we have a representative from CSEA, maybe.
Mr. Sinatra, do you see anyone in, online? We do not have anybody in the boardroom this evening, but perhaps online?
I do not see anybody for CSEA online right now either.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sinatra. Not at this time, Madam President.
Thank you. Do we have any audience members?
We do have a request, Madam President, from Ms. Kim Vigiliano. Uh, is she in the Zoom meeting, Mr. Sinatra?
Unfortunately, I don't see Kim online right now either.
All right, that was the only, uh, open session comment we had, Madam President, this time.
Thank you very much. Moving on to section twelve, student discipline, expulsions and readmission. Twelve point zero one, academic services. Student ID three, 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 two, seven, two. Discipline number twenty, twenty-three dash twenty, twenty-four dash zero, four. Can I get a motion?
Bens, I mo- motion to approve the pan- panels rec- recommendation, and I don't have the exact things in for a run of me, like. But I do recommend that we, we do accept the rec- recommenda- datation.
Trustee Benz, I think it was expelled for the remainder of the school year and for next school year as well.
And yes, that.
That's not seventy-two.
No, that's, that's seven, seven, seventy-two.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, two semesters.
Yes.
The student is an eighth, is an eighth grader.
Eighth, yes.
Can I get a second?
Trustee Turner, a second.
Ms. Leve, would you please take the vote?
For clarification, it's to approve the recommendation um, for the remainder of the first semester and the second semester for the twenty twenty-three. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Um, trustee Soto, oh, sorry, trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I, motion pass four, zero. Moving on to section tw- twelve point zero two, academic service, student expulsion case. Student ID thirty-four, thirty-three, fifty-five. Discipline number twenty, twenty-three dash twenty, twenty-four dash zero, five. Can I get a motion?
Okay. I mo- motion that this, I motion that I, I want to make an amend, amended rec- recommendation that the stu- student ent- enter the HOPE pro- program. And if the stu- student fa- fails to accept or complete the HOPE pro- program, then they are to be suspend, suspended, not suspended, expelled for the remain- remainder of the first sememester and the second sememester of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
Trustee Turner, I second that motion.
Ms. Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I, motion pass four, zero. Section thirteen, adoption of the minutes. Thirteen point zero one, trustees, I need a motion to approve as written and ordered field the regular board meeting of November the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. May I have a motion? I motion to approve. Can I have a second?
Turner, I second.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote. Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I, motion pass four, zero. Moving on to section fourteen, consent agenda. We're taking items fourteen point zero two through fourteen point five zero. Does any trustee want to pull an item? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve?
Trustee Turner, motion to approve the consent agenda as stated.
Can I get a second?
Benz, I sec- second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing no discussion, Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I, motion pass four, zero. Um, section fifteen, items, oh, we did not. Great. Section sixteen, we're going into new business. Trustees, I need a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three slash twenty-four first interim financial report. May I have a motion?
Bens, I mo- mo- motion to, uh, approve.
May I have a second? La French, I second. We're open for discussion.
Um, I just want to say real, real quick that I'm thank, thankful that we are, um, being tran- transparent, parent. You know, aft- after oh, oh, eight and all the cuts, I always wor- worry about when tha- that will hap- happen again. Hopefully it won't, but we must be fiscally re- re- response, responsible with what, whatever we, we can get from the state, so. You know, hopefully our state law make- makers can be fit, fiscally response, responsible and make the ne- necessary cuts. And I could go on and on, but hopefully that they see it and do not hurt our schools. That's all.
Thank you, Benz. Anyone else? Hearing none, Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I, motion pass four, zero. Moving on to section sixteen point zero two. Trustees, I need a motion to approve resolution number twenty-three point twenty-four point eleven to authorize Adelanto Elementary School District to receive the individual retirement annuity from Mrs. Victoria McGathen as a donation to Victoria McGathen Elementary School. Can I get a motion?
Trustee Turner, motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Benz, I sec- second.
We're now open for discussion.
I would just like to say that this is a generous donation, um, from Miss Victoria McGathen's estate to Victoria McGathen School. And when I read that and I saw that, you know, it just brought tears to my eyes. You know, even though she's not here, she's still serving our community and our students, and I just want to, you know, say thank you for all you've done, and may you continue to rest in peace. And yes, that's all I have.
I'm just, what a one, wonderful care- caring gift.
Yes, I concur. Thank you. Yes, at this time, um, Mr. Kraus will have, has something to read.
Yes, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. As trustee Turner stated, this is absolutely amazing that she would leave this kind of legacy to Victoria McGathen School, and so we are proud this evening to bring this before the board. Ms. McGathen was hired in our district September first of nineteen sixty-four. Absolutely amazing. She retired in June thirtieth of two thousand and four with over forty years of service to our district. Absolutely amazing that she was in our district that long. She was born in Chicago to the late Anton and Lubika Razmo, uh, Bulgarian immigrants, interestingly enough. And then she was married to Glenn McGathen, who was a retired major in the US Air Force until his passing in nineteen ninety-eight. During her retirement, Ms. McGathen enjoyed traveling around the world. She was a volunteer at St. Mary's Medical Center and worked in the gift shop. In August of two thousand and five, a new elementary school in the district was named in her honor. And so this evening, members of the board, we are, uh, truly humbled and honored that her estate again would leave such a legacy, not only when she was here, but even after her passing, uh, with this amount of, of money that will be used uh, for quite some time into the future to impact the students of Victoria McGathen Elementary School. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leve, will you please take the vote?
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I, motion pass four, zero. Section sixteen point zero three, trustees, I need a motion to approve and adopt resolution number twenty-three dot twenty-four dot twelve for debt, debt management policy and a resolution number twenty-three point twenty-four point thirteen for local goals and policies for community facilities districts for the Adelanto Elementary School District.
Uh, Benz, I mo- mo- motion to approve.
Can I get a second? La French, I second. We're open for discussion.
Um, I just, um, Mr. Kraus, could you just in lane, like men's term, e- explain what this, this is?
Absolutely. So thank you for your question, trustee Benz. Anytime a district sells bonds, as we recently did for the community facilities districts, uh, and raise money, we have to have a updated debt management policy. Basically, it talks about for the public, uh, how the money will be spent, uh, the purpose for what it will be used for, uh, the relationship to debt to the community, why it's being raised and how it's being assessed to people, and so uh, anytime that we undertake something like this, we always update, or in our case, we actually did not have one in the district. And so we're bringing this, uh, uh, on the next item that will be down under seventeen oh one as a first read of the policy, uh, for debt management. And so again, it's for transparency and to let the public and community know, uh, that we do have a debt management, uh, policy in place, and that we're just not taking the money and running with it.
All right, thank, thank you.
Absolutely.
Hearing no further discussion, Ms. Leve, will you please take the vote?
Trustee Webster.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I, motion pass four, zero. Section seventeen, policy introductions, updates, and readings. Seventeen point zero one, trustees, I need a motion to adopt and approve the first read of bylaw board policy on thirty-four seventy for debt management. Can I get a motion?
Turner, I motion to approve the first reading.
Can I get a second?
Benz, I sec- second.
We're open for discussion. Hearing none, Ms. Leve, will you please take the vote?
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I, motion pass four, zero. Section eighteen, governing board members' reports and announcements. Hmm, nineteen point zero one, governing reports.
I think that, that's a type, that's a typo.
Oh, I was going down to a German.
You were try- trying, right?
I get there. Okay. Would any trustee like to make a comment or announcement report?
I'll go first. Uh, I will forego my comments, but I would just like to, I wish everyone a happy holiday. I know this is the last board meeting of the year, and I was just wishing everyone to enjoy their time off and be safe and stay warm. And we'll see you in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I'm gonna keep mine short and just concur with trustee La La French. I hope you're all safe. You have a nice, safe hol- hol- holiday. Enjoy it. Enjoy your fam- fam- family and hap- happy new, new year. And aft- after the cr- Christmas, happy new year, happy holidays? Tired.
Moving right along.
I'm gonna withhold my comments tonight, but I do want to wish everybody a happy holidays and a great new year.
I too shall withhold my comments for tonight, but I do want to concur with um trustee um Benz and Ms. Trustee Webster and trustee Turner. Uh, once again, I want to uh thank my um board, and I um excited for the new year as a board president. Thank you. Oh, have happy holidays, get lots of rest, so you don't look how tired like I look right now. Okay, um trustees, I need a motion to adjourn.
Benz. Benz, I motion to adjourn. I'm gonna take the motion.
Can I get a second? La French, I second. Ms. Leve, please call for the vote.
Webster, I.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I, and I want to note that the time is ten oh three. Everyone have safe holidays, safe travels, and see you in the new year. Now I want my glasses. Adjourn. I'm gonna get my flowers.